Welcome to the Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, August the 5th, 2025, and we are in Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas, 76048. Welcome to everybody that is here, welcome to those who are online. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And to kick us off, I'm going to ask that Pastor Dave McClure of the Acton Baptist Church give us the invocation. If we'll stand, then we'll do the pledges afterwards.
Father, we just want to honor you. I ask that the men and the women who lead our town, first and foremost, are in their home life, their personal lives honoring, glorifying you, seeking to follow you with all that they are, because we know that will carry over into their public life. And we ask that our leaders live a life above reproach in a way that glorifies you and our community and honors you in their business dealings and the way we move forward in our community. So that people are cared for and that people are acknowledged and heard. And Lord, we pray that the meeting tonight is a meeting that is one that is civil, but goes beyond that, one where people are seeking to glorify you, because our life should revolve around you and your goodness and your grace. And Jesus, we ask that you make our town a place where the gospel is boldly proclaimed, a place where our town is a place where those who are lost can come and find hope and life, forgiveness, and salvation. In Jesus, it is your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the great state of Texas.
On our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We're going to move down to number four. Proclamation, City Council and City Manager issue encouraging statements to recognize city staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a lot to be thankful for tonight. I'll try to be brief, but I do have about four pages of size 16 font notes here. First off, I would just like to thank Keith Kendall with Impro Tech, Kibbs and Todd, for the work that they've done to help us facilitate receiving a grant. I'd like to read a letter that I received today. Funding Determination Letter from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Emerging Contaminants Program. Dear Mr. Kaufman, the Texas Water Development Board received your application for financial assistance for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Emerging Contaminants Program for the project detailed below. So if you read down below, it's for the new desal plant that we need to address the growing needs of the community that was in our capital improvement plan, but also for the forever chemicals that are in Lake Granberry. And so total funding as principal forgiveness awarded, of course, they've got to have a board meeting with the Water Development Board to make this final, $57,800,000. So that's a huge shot in the arm for our community. I can't thank our local engineering team enough for the work that they did on that and how we're pulling it together to make it work with city staff. So just wanted to share that with you. I've talked about this in the past, but this is, we have six months from the date of this letter to move forward and to fund this project, and then it's a debt forgiveness program, so we'll have to issue debt. I'm not sure how it works logistically. We'll figure it out in the coming weeks, but we have six months from the date of this commitment for us to make all our commitments line up with theirs. Great news.
It is really great news.
It's the biggest grant I've ever experienced, so pretty excited. I want to brag about some folks. Early on the morning of May 7th, one of our city pickups was stolen. It was locked inside our yard over on Kings Plaza. Three individuals utilized that pickup to break into Wellington State ATM, Wellington State Bank ATM at 1300 Block, Highway 377 East. That's over in front of Aldi's, and they stole almost $13,000 in cash. Detective Zach Anderson spent hours reviewing surveillance video footage from nearby stores, reviewing the Flock LPR cameras, writing search warrants for cellphone towers, and working with investigators from other agencies, including the FBI Robbery Task Force. As a result of his diligence and expertise, we were able to identify the three criminals, catch this, who reside in Houston area, and have been traveling the United States conducting similar ATM burglaries. Thank you Detective Anderson for your efforts in identifying, obtaining the warrants for these three individuals involved in the ATM burglary in our city. Can you imagine our little department taking care of a criminal network that's moving throughout the state? I'm pretty excited about that. Thank you, Zach, for doing a great job. I don't know if you're here back there, but I thought that was you, but we appreciate you. That goes to show you how much we care about what we do in Granberry. Thank you. That's a good example. Also, another one I want to brag about, this is a great story. On July 23rd, a Glen Rose resident was buying gas at Granberry HEB, and she took off her wedding ring and set it on top of the fuel pumps while she got gas. It was such a big ring, I guess it was kind of heavy, I don't know. The wedding ring was a family heirloom and belonged to her mother who passed away from cancer. After pumping the gas, the woman drove away, forgetting her ring at the fuel pump. When she returned to the fuel pumps, the ring was gone. So Officer Jake Ruby spent hours coming through HEB surveillance video, as well as a Flock LPR video, and ultimately was able to contact the individual who found the ring. After being contacted by Officer Ruby, the individual turned the ring into the police department and ultimately returned to the owner. Thank you Officer Jake Ruby for your efforts in recovering the lost wedding ring valued at over $50,000.
Whoa.
Are you here?
Not here.
Jake's not here?
He's not.
Well, thank y'all. Appreciate your work. And that's all. So that's page one of my notes. All right. Carlos got a little electric department video, wanted to show y'all. So I don't know if it's an active video or just a picture.
It's a picture.
Okay. So at 9:00 PM on Saturday night, July 26th, this is our team replacing the blown transformer and so that the skating rink could reopen for all the kids that are waiting to party there. So that just shows you some of the activity that goes on around the clock. Got another repair we'll talk about here in a minute. Some promotions, talk about those Nicholas Worthing, Distribution Collection Foreman, and thank you Nicholas for jumping in and leading there. Some certifications, license, and educational achievements, want to list those to you. Cody Martin, Parks Pesticide Applicator License. Josh Dean, Bryce Gentry, Jorge Hernandez passed their D Wastewater Treatment Operator Exams. Those three are now certified as operators. Ryan Riggs and Jonathan Ziegler both passed their C Wastewater Treatment Operator Exam. This classifies them as Operator One, which means they can operate the plant and the entire system. Caitlin Pioner passed her C Surface Water Operating Exam and is active at the water treatment plant, making pure, safe, and beneficial water for our community. Caitlin is also an A Operator, Wastewater Operator, and she wanted to expand her horizon by getting her A license in the water side of the thing as well. So we're pleased to have these folks. Chuck, could you show the video that we've talked about? This is the disaster we recently experienced, and this is some footage that Chuck put together to kind of give you an idea of what happened. We had a major break in a main line that goes underneath the highway over 100 feet. We had to, I'll give you a breakdown in a minute, but this kind of shows you some of the hard work that went on in the last 10 days. This is the easy part, putting it back together. That's flushing the system after they superfluorinated the line. Thank you. So let me just kind of give you all an idea of what happened. On-call personnel were called out to a leak that was investigated and attempted to begin repairs at 12:20 AM on July 27th. Once identified, the ongoing investigation, we began seeking a contractor to fish out the old line from the casing under the highway. The mayor issued a disaster on Tuesday, which allowed the city to aggressively remediate the issue. Had we not issued the disaster, we would have been drawing engineer plans and having to advertise for a couple of weeks and finally receive bids and open those, and then we could award the bid. If it was under $50,000, we could have done it administratively, but I was foreseeing it was going to be a new bore and a new pipeline, so we didn't know. But the disaster was declared. On July 31st, City Manager issued a Stage One Voluntary Water Conservation Plan. On August 1st, we could see that that voluntary action didn't work, and we were down to dangerously low levels, below 20% capacity of our tanks were filled. So in order to keep from getting to a point where we had to issue boil notices for the entire city, City Manager issued a Stage Five Water Conservation Plan, which mandated many things, mainly no more irrigation and no more car washes. So we had to actually ask the car washes to be closed during the day. They could open eight hours during off-peak hours of water use, but other than that, nobody could irrigate or wash down cars or boats or driveways or houses or anything with public water. Fanbro Construction was contacted and began working on August 1st, and in August 2nd, we found our takes extremely low and engaged with AMUD for an emergency water interconnect that we have, that we can ship water to them in an emergency and us back and forth. And so we began purchasing water from them for our Granberry water system. It wasn't that our plant wasn't able to make the water, it wasn't able to deliver it in time to the places it needed to be delivered. So this is not a single point of failure. We had redundancy, but the redundancy is not enough to keep the system full with the amount of volume that we have. So we were excited to get that water rolling into our system. On August 5th, Fanbro Construction, along with city staff, completed the repairs, and the city staff flushed the lines for activation of the new water main. Materials and supplies were picked up in locations as far away as Houston to meet our needs as quickly as humanly possible. At 3:00 today, the City Manager lifted the Stage Five Mandatory Water Conservation Plan. So a huge thanks to Cameron at Fanbro Construction for his willingness to pull his crews from another job in a different city to come to Granberry for our emergency. Wow, you got to think about that. I mean, he's willing to stop what he's doing, pull off the job, and come help us. And whoever that city is, we want to thank them for allowing him to come, because he's obviously under contract with them. Want to thank the mayor and the council for your encouragement and support as we worked through the event. Thank you for, city team, holy cow, for working nonstop on this matter until it was resolved. Let me just give you some idea of who they were. The Public Works Department, the entire Public Works Department, the Parks Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, Finance, Purchasing and Billing, City Management. This was an interesting, County Maintenance Director, Leland Larson, offered any assistance necessary. Just called us up out of the blue. What can I do to help? Thank you, Lee, Leland. And last but not least, County Emergency Management Coordinator, Margaret Camber, provided emergency management services. Thanks to our citizens and our businesses for your patience and cooperation during this untimely event. So that's all I've got for you folks. That's a good report of some positive action and some good things happening. So we'll get to the agenda when y'all are ready. Y'all have anything you'd like to add?
That's a lot. Yeah. Mr. Wildin, did you have something?
Just a lot.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, Mayor. I just want to say, council, thank y'all for just standing by. I know Chris reached out to all of us individually and said if we needed to, we could do an emergency council, and everybody was more than welcome to pitch in. And Mayor, thank you for being there. Thank you for making yourself available. Even during the times that we're not available, you make yourself available for these type of emergencies. We need your signature, we need your auto pin on some of those things. But, you know, it takes good leadership from the top down, from the mayor on down. You know, I know the City Manager compliments everybody and his staff, and the one thing that he doesn't do well enough is compliment himself, so here I am, giving him kudos to all the administrative teams and all the, everybody else that's there, Lord, you know, that's below him. You know, it takes a team, and that's what we are here at the city of Granberry, from the mayor, the city council, on to the administration and on to the staff. And we just say thank you for everything that y'all do, the time that y'all put in, and especially the overtime that y'all put in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corrigan? Somebody else have their, Mr. Dooley, Alom? No? No? I did want to very quickly just make sure that we do get the mayor's name, provided that he or she knew that these folks were leaving, because I will want to reach out and say thank you. And you mentioned, you just happened to mention redundancy, and Mr. Rodriguez mentions the auto pin and the signing, and I think it's important that we have redundancy. Of course, we have a mayor pro tem that can do this, but if you really need my signature, my daughter's been able to do my signature for years, so just reach out to her and you'll have all the redundancy you need.
I'll just check.
Yeah, she's learned it somewhere. Okay. We're going to go to the public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. Anything that's on a public hearing, we will pull up during the same time that we have the staff review, and then we'll call for the public comments on that. But I do have some public comments from Mr. Haye, that is not on the public agenda here. So you're looking to speak to 7.8, I believe. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Yes, 7.8, which will be later on the agenda, is a discussion of a possible parking garage to help with parking. Now granted, we don't have enough parking for the major events, and that's been a challenge for the city for a while, and we certainly need to explore all opportunities. I'm concerned about a parking garage, because the cost per spot slot is significantly more than a surface lot. And before we go down the road of looking at a parking deck, I hope we'll consider all possible surface parking options. In my opinion, the city-owned property at the old Veterans Museum, just a block and a half from the proposed location of the parking deck, is an ideal location for an additional surface lot. City owns the property, it's on a main road into the city, and as we typically run a shuttle for major events, it's just another block and a half to run the shuttle, so it's very timely for getting people to the square for our major festivals and celebrations. In addition to the cost, I have to think about what it says about the character of our city. We're the best historic small town in America, not because we pretend to be a small town, because we genuinely are a small town, and a parking deck just doesn't fit in well with the small-town vibe, and I think we have to be very careful about putting something that's typically found in an urban area in our wonderful small city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have also Mr. Mark Leon, would like to speak on item 7.2. Mr. Leon?
Oh, is that a public comment? Public hearing? We've changed the numbering on here, and I said, no, don't bother, don't bother, I'll take care of it. So I will get to that when we get to the public hearing.
I'm going to go to the consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda are routine, are previously discussed items, and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Council, anyone want to bring anything forward, questions, comments on it? No? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made.
Second.
Mr. Alom seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that's approved, 6-0 with the consent agenda. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we will go to 7.1, which is a consideration, Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 25-44, approving the proposed 2025 Comprehensive Plan for the city of Granberry. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you may recall, we've been working on this for approximately 18 months, and it's important to get it right. And today, we have staff that's been working on that. David has been working with us. I'll turn it over to Kira Wildin to walk you through her presentation and whatever David and his team may have for us. Thank y'all.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate the efforts of the community working on this, and the consultant, Freeze Nichols, David Jones here. David has our presentation for you, and I'll just hand it over to him then. Thank you.
Thanks, Kira. Thanks, Chris, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be before you today. This is a very important day for Granberry. As Chris mentioned, we've been on this path since early last year, been working with Kira and Cody, and I want to recognize them in particular for doing a great job of helping guide this plan and the development of this plan. But maybe more importantly, once we had a draft put together early in the year, we've gone through a process of refinement that includes working with council in a couple of workshops, and then going back to PNZ to make sure that we really got it right and really allowed ourselves time to look through it and make sure that it's going to be a great tool for the city to use going forward. So on the screen, we've identified about 10 different touchpoints that the public has had with this plan, starting back in April, so that's about a 14-month time span. Public workshops, workshops with the Planning and Zoning Commission, who served as our steering committee. We sat at tables with them right down here in this room, looking at the future land use map and really poring over every detail of this plan to make sure that it not only captures and celebrates Granberry for its identity and what makes it special and unique, but identifies ways to preserve and build on that moving forward. So we are coming to you tonight, asking for adoption of this plan, for your approval to begin implementing the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. This provides you a number of wonderful tools, and you know, we've gone over these in prior meetings, so I don't want to take too much time. I know there's a long agenda tonight, but really, the guiding principles that are identified in the plan are intended to encapsulate what makes Granberry what it is. Each of the recommendations and strategies that are outlined in the plan have one or more tie-ins back to these guiding principles. So they talk about downtown, they talk about the lake, the lakefront, the small-town feel and identity that we just heard about, and also engaging the community and uplifting the community economically through growth that is intended to provide opportunities for everyone and not leave anyone behind. So ease of use and functionality is a real, I'd say, emphasis of this plan. As you look through it, you know, there's a lot of pictures, a lot of graphics. The plan itself isn't designed to be very visually engaging, but we wanted to make sure that it wasn't just for show, it wasn't just to look good, but that it actually provided you tools that you can use in your deliberations every meeting, twice a month at the council level, but every day in terms of staff and in terms of administration. So the future land use dashboards provide a lot of tools for deliberative thinking about land use changes, about future growth and the impacts that that's going to have on various systems, the impacts that it's going to have on your current development patterns and current residences, and then the appropriateness of different developments within certain districts of the city. Within those land use categories, we added several overlays that identify the characteristics of specific areas, like the lakefront, like the area along 377 as you cross the lake, where there's new development happening, but also existing development, that we wanted to recognize that that is a large economic generator for the city. It's also a large source of traffic, so understanding how that impacted the network, how that impacted the character of the overall area, identifying those areas and the characteristics that are contained within them will hopefully, we think, give council a lot of tools to help manage that growth and build on it going forward. We've also added the most recent TechDOT traffic counts. That's going to tie in with the future land use plan and really help council understand the growth trajectory of traffic within the city and the build-outs of the network within the city. We also aligned, the timing worked out great, to align with the Hood County Thoroughfare Plan to ensure that the areas where you might be in the city over here, might be in the county over here, that we're not seeing disjointed development of roads and mobility. And then all that becomes integrated within the economic analysis within the plan to really understand what the market is pushing for and how the city can align itself with the market to build on your economic development goals and strategies. So the future land use map, the implementation matrix that I mentioned a moment ago, that outlines all those strategies and then ties it back to the guiding principles, also provides an expectation in terms of timeframe, in terms of the costs associated with each of those strategies, from really just making an administrative or policy change, you know, all the way up to making major capital investments, will tie right into your budgeting process, will tie right into your CIP process to align all of those efforts, to manage growth, to anticipate it, and to be ready when growth happens. So your future master thoroughfare plan is really the other side of the coin from the future land use map, enhances mobility, particularly parallel to 377, and this is where we were able to work with the Hood County Thoroughfare Plan to ensure that east-west connections were provided for, both close to 377 and also further south, particularly where we're seeing a lot of growth, and then parallel to the loop, where there's been a lot of annexation recently and a lot of upcoming residential development. So it's 2024 TechDOT volumes, those were released back in July, so that's kind of hot off the press, incorporated into the plan, so that you'll have up-to-date data to work with. We also updated the historic inventory around downtown, really turned downtown into a celebration of maybe one of Granberry's most defining features, or its most defining feature, really set y'all up for success over the next five to 10 years to start planning around how downtown continues to develop and build on what makes it great, helping to tie it into the lakefront, so that we're better linking the two most defining features of Granberry, and kind of tying the two sides of the lake together with the lake core overlay on the other side. So I mentioned the growth management tools that the Comprehensive Plan is designed to provide. Really moving forward, you know, this is a great day in terms of considering adoption of the plan and wrapping up the process, and you know, the 18 months of engagement and working together, but really, the job gets started, you know, with adoption. One part of the process ends, a new part of the process begins. So in terms of really implementing the plan, making sure that, you know, this is not something that sits on a shelf until we come back and update it again, but really making it a document that serves the city well, you know, really involves forging those partnerships, both within the city and outside the city, with TechDOT, with the county, you know, with other business partners within the city. Each of those implementation items, each of those strategies, has a list of partners who share responsibility for ensuring that those things are implemented. So from a high-level standpoint, you as city council, you know, you guide the budget, you guide the growth ultimately of the city, but this also empowers your partners, such as the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, who really will continue in an informal role to be a steering committee for the Comprehensive Plan through reviewing the recommendations of the plan, through making recommendations on alignment with zoning changes and developments aligned with the future land use map, and then with staff and administration to ensure that those things are being executed. It's really a partnership, it's really something that's intended for one party to reinforce the other. This is also, you know, a plan that is intended to be flexible, so that as opportunities arise through developments, through economic opportunities, you know, whether it's near the airport or along 377, that this plan is intended to be flexible and provide, again, that set of guiding principles to help make decisions so that you're operating within the framework of the plan, instead of, well, this plan was great, but now we have another opportunity, so we're going to have to set the plan aside because it didn't really anticipate this great opportunity. We've really worked hard to think through that so that the city is well-prepared, you know, regardless of the opportunities and the growth trajectory that you may be on. So with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend approval at their July 14th meeting. That's the same plan that's before you tonight, so again, very excited to be here tonight. Love to entertain any questions that y'all Love to entertain any questions that y'all have, but otherwise, we're hopeful that you can consider adoption tonight and we can start implementing.
Very good. What is the document that you have on the dais there?
This is the July twenty-four copy of the plan.
So you added a little bit. One that I have is quite a bit bigger than that, so we'll go through it again and again and again. One of the things that I like about the plan, first of all, I think, you know, if you don't have a plan, you're lost. The second thing is documents that come forth in the fifteen-year plan, the five-year plan, the month plan, those get used. This will be well-worn and tattered before it gets redone in the next five years. We appreciate it and thank you for all of the work that you've done on this. Thanks for going back and implementing some of the newest information that you had. Like you said, Tech Dot information from July twenty-four changed dramatically as we began to look at it. Tech, where is it, 171? They record the car, the automobile traffic on daily, the daily average traffic at 171 and 377 is right at sixty thousand. That's like five or six or ten thousand more than it was just two years ago and not slowing down. Thank you. We appreciate this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel? Comments? Questions? Got him here. So do I hear a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash forty-four, approving the proposed 2025 comprehensive plan for the city of Granbury?
So moved.
Mr. Wawie makes the motion. You're second.
I'll second.
Mr. Rodriguez makes second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It passes six and oh. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, thank you and your staff as well.
I'd like to extend to thank you, the Freeze and Nichols team, for your hard work and playfulness to follow through and get this thing done and updated and enduring our comments and whatever the citizens do at you as well. So thank you all. I know that y'all had a great time putting it together and we look forward to continuing to work with y'all in the future.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Kira, I see you threw those, our options up there. Did we satisfy those options for you? We approved the comprehensive plan? Okay. Great. Okay. We'll move to seven point three, which is also a public hearing. Mr. Leon, when we get through with the staff information here.
Seven point two.
Seven point two. I got to get the books right. Yeah. Seven point two is to consider adopting ordinance number twenty-five dash forty-five, approving the request of Mark Leon for a zoning change from business commercial, light commercial, and heavy commercial to planned development-based multiple-family located at sixteen forty-one South Meadows. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I actually sat in on the P and Z meeting when this came up, so I got to hear it all. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Wawie to introduce the project and explain it to you and excited about the potential, what people are wanting to do in our community.
Thank you, sir. As usual, this is our location map. The site is outlined in teal and it is located off of Morgan and Meadows. The request for zoning was stated is for a planned development with multifamily zoning for an apartment complex. That's what they want to develop. This is a zoning map showing the existing zoning with business commercial, light commercial, and heavy commercial. There is frontage along Morgan that will remain as commercial zoning. And this is, this zoning change is consistent with the future land use plan, which is for high-density residential indicating apartments with multifamily development. There are two amended development standards that the applicant is requesting. That's reason four, the PD plan development. The first is for the building height to be taller than thirty-five feet, and it does provide additional setback, which you'll see on the site plan coming up here in a second. It's also a request to increase the maximum density from the existing density of eighteen dwelling units per acre to twenty-two dwelling units per acre. So this is the site plan. The layout is in a garden-style apartments with open space between the buildings and intermixed with parking. Access would be provided off of both Meadows and through property to Morgan Street. There's an access easement along the west property line to existing property that would be taken care of during plotting. This is the landscape plan, showing trees and other vegetation. That goes with the plan development as usual. And these are the elevations that are proposed. It includes masonry and vertical plankboard. That's not the right term for it, but it is a vertical construction material on the exterior of buildings. Lap siding. Thank you. The planning and zoning considerations come forward with these as summarized from zoning ordinance, and essentially the proposal is consistent with the future land use and the uses in the area, which include multifamily, residential, and commercial uses. Street access would be to Meadows as well as Morgan. The area has utilities. It may add some school students. The proposal would increase the amount of multifamily zoned land. The development rate, this is the first multifamily in this area since the 2013 approximate apartments were built to the west along Meadows. And there would be new multiple-family units, increasing the available number of units in the area. We provided public notice, both in the newspaper as well as by mail. We received no letters in response in favor and five letters have been received in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of the request. And Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval. And these are your voting options. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Comments?
Kira, the increased height, is that because it's a three-story?
Yes. The applicant explained that at the Planning and Zoning Commission. He might explain it better than I can, but it's a nine-foot ceiling, floor-to-ceiling, and then the roof. So because of the additional floor-to-ceiling height and the roof, that pushes the building up just a tad.
And how much does that exceed what the allowed limit is now?
Thirty-five.
Thirty.
Eleven feet.
Yeah. The allowance now is thirty-five and they're proposing forty-five.
Oh, ten feet. I thought it was forty-six. On the elevations is forty-six, right?
Forty-six? Forty-four? Or forty-one?
The applicant is here, or the architect, he can answer those questions.
Let's have him explain that then.
Mr. Leon? Or do you want this, Kira, or do you like Mr. Leon? Just kind of go ahead and come on up.
Yes, sure.
If you would introduce yourself, let us know where you're from.
Forty-five. Yep. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Leon with Cross Architects. Our address is eight seven nine Junction Drive, located in Allen, Texas. Let me talk a little bit about us and Cross Architects first, and then we'll dive into the project. Our office has been in business since 2003, which has celebrated our twenty-two-year anniversary in June. We only build apartments, and we only build apartments in the state of Texas. That's kind of our bread and butter. It's what we specialize in, it's what we've been doing for a little bit more than two decades now. We have some projects very close to y'all, which has built something in Midlothian. We got a project in Corsicana, Willow Park, and Cleburne, all kind of in this general area. So we're very familiar with, you know, this size of town, making sure we're coming in and being good neighbors to the residents around us. Let me talk about the project a little bit. So first off, we're proposing one hundred and ninety-two units in total. That's going to be arranged in a total of eight residential buildings, three stories in height, and I do want to be very specific that we are only doing one- and two-bedroom units very intentionally. We understand that a three-bedroom unit brings big families, children. We obviously are not opposed to that, but we understand that it puts a tax on the school system, and we're intentionally aiming for that one- and two-bedroom unit count, so we're not overtaxing the school system. Another thing I want to emphasize is this is a market-rate luxury apartment complex. There is no affordable aspect to it. This is not tax credit. This is not assisted living, affordable housing, Section Eight, any of those terms. This is full-priced luxury, high-end apartments. We intend to be the nicest apartments in town. That's our goal. Let me talk a little bit about why we're going the PD instead of just a straight multifamily zoning route. There were two exceptions that were spoken about just a moment ago. One was the density, the second was the building height. Let's talk about the density first. You noticed on our site plan that we did carve out a one-and-a-half-acre lot along Morgan Street, maintaining the existing heavy commercial. We are very familiar with construction and development, and we understand build-it-and-they-will-come kind of concept. So we really want to maintain that commercial corridor that you have along Morgan Street with the racetrack right there on the hard corner already. We want to maintain that commercial frontage for you. Then to the west of that lot, you can see we have a large detention pond placed there in order to retain the water that's required for the site. We have brought a civil engineer on board and they've assisted us in sizing that. So because we lost that commercial lot and because of the large detention pond, we had to kind of condense down the units that we planned on putting here into a smaller footprint. So we are slightly above the eighteen units per acre that's allowed in the base multifamily zoning, and we're asking for twenty-two. We're at twenty-one point two-six, to be exact, and we're requesting twenty-two. On the building height, thirty-five, from my research of your ordinances, is the max building height allowed, and we're proposing forty-five. I want to be clear as to why we're asking for that. We are not proposing an additional floor. We're not trying to do a four-story product. We're staying at a three-story product, but because we have nine-foot ceilings in our units, we're not doing a eight-foot ceiling like you might find in a tax credit department. The finished ceiling of the third floor without a roof would be thirty feet and six inches. That gives us four and a half feet to build a roof, which is just not possible. A roof is going to be anywhere between, probably closer to ten feet, approximately, you know, just hipping it from front to back. That would get us to about forty feet. We want to make sure that depending on how the city, the fire department, measures the peak of the roof compared to the foundation of the building, or to the grade around of the building, or measuring it to the fire lane, we just want to make sure we're fully in compliance and underneath that maximum height number. That's why we asked to increase it to forty-five, just to make sure the roof and the raised ceilings in our buildings stay underneath that max building height. I wanted to kind of talk about the neighbors as well. I know that there were five letters received opposed. I have personally spoken with the, I believe there are about nine homes to our north, on our northern property line, and there's also a lot to our west that's kind of sandwiched between us and that existing apartment complex to our west. I have spoken with a majority of those residents personally, some of them during our last P and Z meeting. Those were the neighbors to our north. I believe it was a Paula Johnson and a James Johnson, just to name two of the individuals I spoke with, and they had some concerns about screening, privacy, how far our buildings are away from their property, making sure we're not going to have apartments that are looking down into their backyards while they're enjoying their privacy. So I just want to speak to that publicly as well. The furthest north building, if you're looking at the site plan, is that building four A, labeled four A. That building is the closest building to that property line. We are approximately ninety feet away from the property line for that building starts. So there is a landscape buffer, there's a parking, there's a fire lane with parking on both sides, then there's a sidewalk, there's a strip of grass, then there's the building. So we are set back pretty significantly from that northern property line, just to make sure we're not literally looking over into someone's backyard. The other thing that we're more than happy to concede with, normally we would do a wrought iron, six-foot-tall metal decorative fence around the perimeter of our property. I understand that type of fencing doesn't give a lot of privacy. We're more than happy, as long as the city allows it, of course, to put a solid six-foot wood fence along that northern property line, just to provide some more privacy for those tenants. That's a concession we're more than happy to do. Speaking about the neighbor to our west, I know that they had concerns. I think currently, they're using this property as access to theirs because they're landlocked right now. They do not have access to a right-of-way because of the apartments to our west. So we've made sure, and you can see it noted on the site plan, and it's required because it is a legal easement, there will be a fifteen-foot-wide access easement on our far-western property line that allows them full access to their property. So you'll see that fifteen-foot easement kind of starts down in the southwest corner, off of Meadow Street. It extends following our entire property line until you kind of see that little notch in our site, that small little bump out. That's where the easement would terminate, and that's where that last property is. So they will have full access. We will not be putting any fencing, any landscaping, any gates, anything that would prohibit them from using that easement. So yeah, all of that, just in the spirit of being good neighbors. We're not trying to come in here and be big developer, push around and not pay attention to the neighbors and the town that we're coming to. We purposely picked the city of Granbury because it's a beautiful town, and there's a big pent-up demand for apartments, or really for just for living in this area, that we feel like that we can come in and bring this product to. As you all know, if anybody's refinanced their home, or bought a home, or purchased a car recently, interest rates are pretty crazy right now. So what we like to do is we want to come in, we want to bring a high-end luxury product that has stainless steel appliances and granite countertops and tile backsplashes and all those things that you would see in a brand-new, single-family home, but give it in a package that someone can afford within today's economy. So that's really the market that we're aiming at. So if you had any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but I think that's a big summary of the project.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Hey, Mark. What's your price point for your one- and two-bedrooms?
That's going to go based on square footage, so it's usually going to be about a dollar, one point five, a dollar fifty to about a dollar seventy a foot, give or take. It's going to depend on the market, when the units come online, where we're at, but that's about what we're talking about. So if we're talking a six-hundred-square-foot unit, that would be about nine hundred dollars to a thousand, approximately. Don't hold me to that, but that's approximately what the city of Granbury is going at as far as apartments, about a dollar fifty to a dollar seventy per foot.
And tonight, we're simply looking at, not simply, but we are looking only at a zoning change, correct?
That is correct, sir. Yes.
This is, the plat and everything else has not been approved, but is certainly appreciated.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. So you're building these. Are you going to be the property managers as well, or you're just building for somebody else?
We're building for a company called Tekin's Construction. We're the architect hired by that company. They're a developer. They have not hired the general contractor that will do the actual construction yet. So they come to us as the developer, we create the plans, hopefully get it through the city with permitting review, and then we'll help that developer then find a local general contractor in the DFW area that we're fluent with, just from our experience, to help them build this project in the city of Granbury.
Okay, but so once it gets built, then who will manage it?
That would be the owner, Mark Tekin's Construction. They're going to be managing and owning the property post-construction, yes.
Other questions? Anyone?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Leon, thank you. Appreciate the input. So I'm going to read this again. We are considering adopting ordinance number twenty-five dash four-five, approving the request of Mark Leon for a zoning change from business commercial, light commercial, and heavy commercial to planned development-based multiple-family located at sixteen forty-one South Meadows. And it is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing at this point in time. Anyone else want to speak? Okay. I don't see anyone, so we will close the public hearing. This is for a zoning change. It is, okay, to plan, to planned development. I do have a question on that. So it's to planned development now. The changes that we looked at in terms of height and distance from, are those a part of the planned development? Are we approving those as well?
Yes.
Okay. 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 So do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the zoning change.
As stated in the item seven point two here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Mr. Corgan, seconds. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. That will pass with six and oh. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leon. Appreciate your time. All right. Move to the next one. Seven point three, this is also a public 7.3, this is also a public hearing. We consider adopting number, ordinance number 25-46, approving the request of Tina Sandoval for a specific use permit to allow pawn shop use in a light commercial area located at 908 East US Highway 377. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wobie as well, our director of community development.
Thank you. Sir, our location is off of Highway 377. The address is 908 East US Highway 377. The property is shown here as a existing commercial building. No new improvements are proposed in terms of changing the parking or the building or any of the site. And this map shows the pink color as being light commercial. The surrounding area is commercial all along the highway frontage and other areas. Again, this is the site plan. It has existing parking, which is adequate for the use, and there's the building. The specific use permit has some criteria that we can walk through. In summary, would the use be harmonious and compatible with the area? Yes, it's a commercial area. The activities associated with the requested use, yes, it's proposed pawn shop and the documents submitted show that. Is the nature of the use reasonable? A pawn shop in this area would be reasonable. The city has, I think, two other pawn shops along 377. Is the impact on the surrounding area being mitigated? The use doesn't appear to have any impacts on the surrounding area. Site improvements are existing. There are regulations associated with the SUP and again, not to repeat what we've already gone through, I'll just highlight those ones that are unique to this slide regarding streets, alleys, sidewalks. Those are all currently developed and established in the area. There's an established building on the property. Conditions may be recommended and imposed. We'll see those also here in a minute. The applicant must be willing to accept and agree to those conditions. If there's a permit required, that needs to be obtained within six months from the grant of the SUP and there is an option for a six-month extension of that time. I need a slight changer. We satisfied public notice, the newspaper, as well as letters sent to surrounding property owners. We received nothing in favor and we did have one letter come in in opposition to the request. And staff is recommending approval with these summarized conditions. The use would be for a pawn shop. No open or outside storage would be permitted. It must conform with the site plan. Parking and maneuvering and such should be on a hard surface and our standard conditions that the use be in compliance with all code requirements, permits and such, and violation may cause the SUP to become null and void. Planning Commission recommended approval with those conditions and staff is recommending approval. As stated, these are your voting options. Thank you.
Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Here to refresh my memory, I thought SUPs were being approved by planning and zoning.
We made a change for that council voted to change the requirements for short-term rentals. So short-term rentals are handled by permit issuance. That might be where the confusion or the question comes from.
So P&amp;Z does short-term rentals, but we do the rest?
Steph does short-term rentals and all other SUPs to come through Planning and Zoning Commission to City Council.
Let's see, we had one objection, one person write in objecting. Is that just the one?
Yes, sir, just one.
Okay. And did you get any input on why the objection?
It's not on the letter.
Yes, just a guess.
If there wasn't anything on the letter, we don't have any explanation.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anyone want to speak? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We have before us to consider adopting ordinance number 25-46, approving the request of Tina Sandoval for a specific use permit to allow pawn shop use in a light commercial located at 908 East US Highway 377. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion. Second?
Second.
Mr. Wobie makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. And did I close the public hearing?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. We'll move to 7.4. It's also a public hearing. We're going to consider adopting ordinance number 25-47, approving the request of the city of Granbury for a comprehensive plan amendment from low-density residential to high-density residential and ordinance number 2548, approving a zoning change from R 8.4 single-family residential to multifamily residential, and this one is located at 1300 South Meadows Drive. Mr. Kaufman?
It says south on the agenda item. Yeah. Yeah. So you got the map and it shows the location, so it's just, it's just north of, I believe that's the Lutheran church. So this is the 10-acre tract that y'all instructed me to go through the process to get rezoned to this project for that project application going to Texas Department of Community Housing Affairs due in September. And so we needed to get this property zoned in time for that application and so we've taken it through the process and I'd like Kara to chime in too, but the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this and I spoke with the Planning and Zoning, answered questions to them based on your instructions to me to seek this being rezoned. So really kind of a no-brainer at this point, if y'all remember the details of that action. So we're, we're trying desperately to not only have other housing come in like what we just approved, but having 55-plus tax credit projects and it's a 10-acre tract. They're proposing to build something on five acres of that tract at this time. Any questions? Y'all need anything? Kara, did I need to add anything to that? So this is our own request.
Does this, does this cause any issues?
What's that? I don't, I don't know that it does because the map is, is probably speaks for itself, but I would certainly want to verify that address is north or south Meadows going forward. The agenda item calls it South Meadows and maybe it turns south at some point as it makes that bend in the road. I don't know.
Let's just all be clear, we, we know where this property is. We see the, we can see it on the map. We understand where this property is that we're speaking to. It's right next to the, to the back of the church.
So I will say that at the P&amp;Z meeting, there were five church members from the Lutheran church that expressed water and storm detention concerns and of course, that's part of the platting process on this property to address that. So I also asked them to reach out to me and I received a voicemail today from one of the church members that's wanting to set up a meeting for me to go look, but if they're having flooding now before development, there may be something that needs to be done by the city to address that need on top of any project that gets done. So we need to, maybe it's a self-inflicted flooding problem. I don't know. I've, I've driven it and there's adequate drainage structures in front of that church, large inlets for stormwater and it goes into a, a, a above-ground ditch, so it's not confined by capacity of a storm drainage pipe. So I'm not sure what happens, but he did say that it gets inside their building and that brought great alarm to me because like I told them, I've been here 10 years and that's the first time I heard about it. So I would like to know about it and so we're going to meet with them and try to figure that out. But I don't think that five acres out of the 10 acres, obviously they'll have to address their own storm detention and storm drain as they submit their civil engineering. So we, I told them it's against the law to allow a property owner to flood a neighboring property owner, so I think we can work through that process. Y'all have any questions for me? Kara, anybody?
No. Mr. Rodriguez? No. Well, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing then, see if anyone else would like to speak on this. Just make sure that we understand where this is on the map because now I can find 1300 Meadows, 1300 North and 1300 South, so just...
Oh, it was listed in north as well?
Well, it's listed as...
North on the church's letterhead.
Uh, on the property comprehensive plan. Yeah, north on the church comprehensive plan and then north on the map, but we know where this property is.
All right. So it's, it's a typo in the agenda item and maybe we should make a note of that, that it's, Carla, that it's 1300 North Meadows Drive, based on the information provided in the rest of the packet. Obviously, that's a typo.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, maybe. We'll, we'll address it as that for now.
Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing. No one wants to raise their hand to speak. So we are considering adopting ordinance number 25-47, and there's, by the way, there's going to be two ordinances here. Consider adopting ordinance number 2547, approving the request of the city of Granbury for a comprehensive plan amendment from the low-density residential to high-density residential. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Corgan? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Overdier makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no one opposed. First part of that will approve, so ordinance number 25.47 is approved. Now, consider adopting ordinance number 25-48, approving a zoning change from R 8.4 single-family residential to multiple-family residential located at 1300 South Meadow Drive. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Overdier makes a motion. Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That too will pass 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. So move 7.5. Consider ordinance number 25-49, amending Chapter 13 Utilities of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances, changing the process for permitting onsite sewage facility, which the initials OSSF, OSSF, and updating the roles and responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and updating the name of the state agency in authority to Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item is really a housekeeping item. It doesn't have a fee change or any structural change whatsoever really, other than the fact that we're going to allow staff to approve the location of an OSSF. And this is a item that the Public Works Department has identified as a way to streamline our process. We have ordinances that say if you're within so many feet of, of sewer system, you're supposed to tie onto it. And if they're 3,000 feet away, obviously they're not going to have to tie onto it and obviously staff should be able to approve that permit so they can move on without having to put it on a rotation for a council meeting and bring it before y'all to get permission. So I'll turn it over to Paul Gast, our Assistant Director of Public Works, to kind of go through what he did to put where we're at. Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, as Manager Kaufman mentioned, this is to clean up Chapter 13 and the utilities. A big part of it is to make it where staff, make OSSFs approvable by staff level instead of having to go to council. A few years ago, the same thing was done for private water wells. At that time, private water wells had to go through a permitting process by staff and then once we worked all through it, it had to come to council for approval. It was approved back then to make it where it's just approvable by city manager or his designee. With this one, we're looking at doing the same thing because yes, as Kaufman mentioned, usually we've looked at this, if the properties are more than 300 feet away from any part of the collection system or if it's just not feasible to connect them to the collection system, then we need to move forward with an OSSF. And that's, usually we have to go through the whole permitting process and then again, come to council for, to get approval. So this, one of the changes is just to make it where it can be approvable, approved at the staff level. Another part of this that's in there is, at one point, this ordinance was amended to require professional engineer stamp on the plans. One of the proposals we have is to go back to the state requirements that it can be designed and stamped by a registered sanitarian or a professional engineer. And so it just improved that. Currently, right now, the registered sanitarians will design the system, then they have to find an engineer that's willing to put their stamp on it and that just adds time and cost to the customer as well. The other, one of the other changes was to switch part of it from the Assistant Director of Public Works, which didn't exist until a few months ago, but to make it where the Director of Public Works can assign the designated representative as a signature on the OSSF applications. And then the main change, there's about eight locations throughout the ordinance that still refer to the Texas Natural Resources Conservation Commission as the state agency in authority, whereas on September 1st of 2002, the name was changed to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. So it said this is, there's multiple changes to Chapter 13 of the utilities ordinance, but the big thing is that we're asking for staff-level approval for OSSFs. And I'm open to any questions that you may have.
And to allow a licensed sanitarian and/or an engineer and to change the names from TNRC to TCEQ. Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So y'all not going to go over there on site and say, y'all need to move it because this licensed sanitarian or the engineer is going to already have those plans and y'all are going to review those plans and y'all just going to say, okay, you got the plans, y'all not going to make any recommendations, is that correct?
That's correct. When a proposal comes in, usually somebody will approach us about a property, wanting to develop it, build on it. A lot of times they'll come to us asking if they can connect a city sewer. I'll usually review the GIS plans or just look at the maps to confirm if that property is within area that we could connect them. If they're not, then they have a registered sanitarian produce a set of plans and they go on Open Gov, submit the application to us. I review the address, make sure the application is complete. As of right now, I have to look to see if it's stamped by PE. And then once I've approved, looked at it, confirmed that the location needs an OSSF, it goes to Eric Swamen Inspections. He reviews the, he does review the permit to make sure that it looks like it's meeting all state standards. And once he's good with it, then we'd usually have to go to council approval, but at this time, if we can make that change, then we'll just be able to issue the permit for them to move forward with the building one.
The only thing I can see is somebody owns a large tract of land and they set back their house pretty far back in their land. You know, are y'all going to be going off of property lines or are y'all going to be going off of the location of the house itself?
The ordinance currently references that if any part of the property is within 300 feet of the collection system, so if they do have a large acreage, you know, and they want to put their house at the back, technically it's off of the, if the property's within 300 feet, we're running out of those issues in town. Recently, the main ones that are coming up are individual lots that are being developed in places or that people are wanting to build on that collection system, just haven't, are nowhere near, is the big part.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you. So this one is the ordinance number 25-49, amended Chapter 13 Utilities of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances, changing the process for permitting an onsite sewage facility, updating the roles and responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and updating the name of the state agency in authority to Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Mr. Corgan? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That'll be approved 6-0 as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul and Chester, for bringing this forward and saying that this is something we need to take care of, so it's good housekeeping on y'all's part.
Thank you, sir.
Every 23 years, we should look at that. Set this date, time and place for a public hearing to receive public input on the city of Granbury proposed fiscal year 2025-26 annual operating budget. Mr. Kaufman?
So the law has changed somewhat and we cannot have a budget... So the law has changed somewhat, and we cannot have a budget hearing on the same night that you adopt a tax rate. So we had to get creative, and there's special notice that has to be done. And we've got all the notices put into place, if y'all are ready to move forward with that. We did have our, our prior board or council action was, the proposed annual budget was presented to council on June twenty-third at the annual budget workshop. And so, staff recommends at this time, at this, recommend at the date, time, and place for the public hearing to be on the fiscal year twenty-two-five-twenty-six. Annual operating budget is scheduled for six P M. on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth this month, twenty-two-five, here at Granbury City Hall, one sixteen Bridge Street. The budget hearing will require a special meeting in order to meet the requirements of section one-oh-two-point-zero-zero-six-B of the Local Government Code. So welcome to the new legislative action. Does that date work for y'all? Because we have to post notice in the paper by the right Saturday, and we have to get that to them by the right Monday, because it's a, it's a Rubik's Cube sometimes to get it all done. We've got everything in place to do it for that date, if that's suitable with y'all.
So make a motion that we recommend the fiscal year twenty-two-five-twenty-six annual operating budget review be scheduled... Public hearing be scheduled for six P M. on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty-two-five, at the Granbury City Hall, one-one-six West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas.
I make that motion.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. That will pass six and oh. Alright, we'll move to seven point seven. Discuss the proposed twenty-two-five property at below our tax rate for the City of Granbury, and vote on the proposed tax rate not to exceed forty-two cents per one-hundred-dollar valuation to be placed on a future agenda for adoption. Mr. Kaufman?
So the memo pretty well spells it out. We were able to get our truth and taxation numbers, our information from the H C A D on Friday of last week, and, or the twenty-fifth, I should say, which makes it pretty tight. So we were able to put this together and work on this. As you may recall, we were talking about a tax rate of thirty-nine point five cents. And since that time, we've been working, since about May, with the county and other entities on our Granbury Regional Radio Network Interlocal Agreement. We have yet to get a confirmation from the county that they are willing to continue on to fund their fair share of this. And so, in order to fund our budget and continue moving forward, and to provide the radio service that we need, we're proposing to add this forty-two cents in here, which is an extra two, or penny and a half, to pay the amount that we are in question of whether the county will pay or not. So should we get the interlocal agreement executed between now and the first meeting in September, we would know that we just need the other tax rate that we proposed. So in lieu of not being able to lock that down at the, it was on their agenda. We had staff there for two and a half hours waiting to review it with them. And they pulled it, when it got to it, they just pulled it, you know, laterally off the agenda. I'd say one individual did. They didn't vote on it, they just pulled it. And that's, that's against their rules of procedure. That's against the rules that are established by the state of Texas, the way they run their meeting. And so, we're sitting here with our hat in our hands, saying, what are we supposed to do? We tried to have a meeting last Fri-, or last Wednesday with leadership. We'll just leave names out with leadership. And ten minutes before our meeting, Deputy City Manager receives a redlined copy of the interlocal agreement that was presented months prior, that was not the interlocal agreement that was presented to you, that y'all approved, even though we had sent them the proper agreement. They had redlined an old agreement. And so, it was handed to me, and before I drove to the meeting, I called the leadership and said, hey, what are you doing? This is the wrong agreement, you've redlined it. Thought y'all wanted to talk today about the current agreement. And so we've decided that they needed a little more time to go over the proper agreement. And so that's kind of where we're at, in limbo. But in view of the need to have this agenda item on the agenda tonight, we had to come up with a tax rate that was suitable to fund our bills in the event they don't want to play with the Granbury Regional Radio Network anymore. So that's kind of where we're at. We hope that we can resolve the issues, and we'll go from there. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Wadley?
So, Mr. Kaufman, since this is a not to exceed forty-two cents, should the county accept the contract the way we presented to them? We could drop it to the thirty-nine and a half?
Yes, sir.
When we actually adopt the rate?
Yes, sir.
And if they don't, then we would have to do the forty-two in order to...
Yes, sir.
...meet all of our obligations?
That's a good summary.
I just want, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman, can you tell me what that amount is that we're expecting? Why such the big difference between thirty-nine and a half and...
The delta is what it takes to fund the county's share of the Granbury Regional Radio Network.
Do you know what that amount of share is?
Based on conversations I had with you, it's about four-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, you know, Ava's got those numbers, and she will be here to go over that with us when we...
And I know that the Granbury I S D just signed a contract to...
Sure.
...to do that. What's the, what's the amount on that?
I do not have that information. Chris, do you know off the top of your head? Come to the microphone, please, sir. Chris Collins, our I T and Security Director. He's in charge of these radios as departmental.
Granbury I S D is right under fifteen thousand. They have forty-three radios. They were paying around seventy-eight hundred last year at thirteen, and we increased the rate to meet all the security requirements and the monitoring, and the rate is the rate from thirteen at twenty, so...
And, and the conversations, so with, with the county, have they purchased the equipment?
So the security and monitoring, all of that is considered core functions, and so that's something the city put into effect and started paying for on August first.
Okay.
What's your question? Let's clarify what your question is.
So I'm trying to figure out the four-hundred thousand dollars, you know, is that for... You know, if they've already paid for their, the radios and all that service, and now they're just paying for the, to be on the network?
Correct. So every, every entity that joins a radio network has their own equipment that they have to purchase, which includes radios. But as part of this regional radio program, it was an agreement that there would be a per-device, so per-radio fee to be on the network to cover our maintenance and upgrades of our core at year seven and year fifteen.
Okay, so in your opinion, the radios that they have now, can they be used? The radios that the county has now, can they be used off of our network?
They would have to have another core, because the core is what allows the communication.
So that...
Have to reprogram all their radios as well.
So that, that puts them in a really big, big pickle themselves. They're putting themselves in a, backing themselves in a corner, because how much does a core cost?
We paid almost three million dollars in twenty-one.
So you're...
That was in twenty twenty-one.
Yes. And the whole reason, we gave them the opportunity to have the core function, and, and they didn't, they decided not to. And the council, this, the council here decided that they would foot, foot the bill and get the core. So in order for them to operate, it's almost, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to weigh anybody's decision, but it's almost that they're gonna have to come to an agreement, come to the table, and come to an agreement with Granbury in order to use their radio systems.
So you've got an excellent point, Councilmember Rodriguez. It's, it's a simple matter of, they're arguing over what it costs to replace the system and to maintain the system. And we've laid that out for them. And so when we have our meeting, and they go give us a new redlined version, maybe we'll understand their concerns. But right now, it's pretty one-sided from our perspective, that we've laid out, you know, that, that we know our fixed cost in seven years, and in year fifteen, and we're, we know how many radios that we have out there, and based on the amount of radios being issued, that's how much your fee is charged. And we've talked to our other entities, and they're still on board to participate in this program. And the county is the only hitch and giddy up, so we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, the other point, Chris, is, I mean, we're so close to the no-new revenue tax rate of three-point-nine-four.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be awesome. Last year, the no-new revenue tax rate last year was point-three-nine-three, and we had a tax rate of point-three-eight-five. We could have gone up, but we didn't. We kept the tax rate low. And here, we're at three-nine-three for the no-new revenue tax rate, and we're just asking, the city is anticipating to be at three-nine-five, is that what you're saying? Three-nine-five? Or, and, and the no-new revenue tax rate is at point-three-nine-four, which is almost about fifty-five thousand dollars difference of a, of that one... One difference. I don't know if it's a, if it's the, from three-nine-four to three-nine-five.
It's a, it's a mill of a cent.
It's a mill of a cent, yes. And I guess my point is, we're, we're making this decision based on the county, which I don't like having that, having them have that leverage over us. If we have to come out of four-hundred thousand, I think that could be, we're always, we always have a surplus in our budget at the end of the year. And I think that surplus, that four-hundred thousand dollars, can come out of that surplus at the end of the year.
That's for you to decide, sir. My job to put it out for you.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Okay, all we're voting tonight is, is a not to exceed forty-two cents.
Correct.
And so, let's see how this plays out in the next few weeks before we actually adopt the budget, because I agree with everything you just said. If we can have the lower budget, we want that.
Right.
But, but tonight's vote is just to cover our bases, so if we, if they don't do, and we, we don't have a choice, and we can look at that, how much surplus there might be. But you also can't bank on surplus is when you don't know.
Well, well, that's true, Bruce, but every year, we've always had a surplus. We've always had some, that, especially more than four-hundred thousand dollars that we can calculate into.
Well, I think you made a good point earlier that I want to really frame for the audience tonight, is the City of Granbury took the lead because the county did not take the lead to provide for the P twenty-five compliant radio system that has been mandated for the all government entities to have adopted by twenty-fifteen. So that didn't happen in our county, and we took the lead, and we offered to do this, and they said, go for it, informally as it was. And they agreed to pay their fair share when they tied on. Now then, we, we spent that money upfront. We're not asking for these people that are participating in the system, that are paying their fees, to pay us for what we invested. All we're asking these partners, if you want to call them that, or participants, or customers, however they want to be phrased, is to pay for the ongoing maintenance and replacement of the system as it ages and moves forward. I just want to make that real clear to everybody, that we're not asking any of these agencies to pay us more money than what it costs to replace the equipment and to provide the NOC and the SOC and the security and the maintenance on it.
There's no difference in a vehicle. You're just replacing a vehicle that goes into life, that has too many miles, is costing you more money to repair it than it is to just replace it.
Into life, and it's C G S equipment, and we gotta have compliance to meet the standards for the criminal justice system, so...
Uh, Chris? Go ahead, go ahead, mister.
Can you tell us, in addition to the city, the county, and the school, who else is involved in this? What other entities have tied into our system?
So, current paid entities are Hood County, Charlton University, the G I S D, Stevenville P D., and, and obviously, Granbury P D. Erath County and Somerville County are still in the process of standing their system up. And until they sign their user acceptance, which basically says, we take the system, that is when they are considered live on the network. So they currently do have radios on our network right now, but they're not live with us.
When those folks do come on board, that will add more radios, and the incremental cost will decrease. But until we have more participants, the cost is the cost.
And where my question came from was, we have, that's a half a dozen or so, seven? I didn't count as you did that. But, but in different entities that are involved, and for each one of those, because we took that on us to provide the core, we've saved them all that money. And, and it can be a lot broader. That's when we first said we would do this. You know, the, the night we went over this, we went from being introduced to this topic to approve and spending three million dollars in almost less discussion than we've had just now. I mean, it was, it was a pretty good discussion that night. I was real impressed with, with what, what staff brought us to explain what we needed to do. And at the time, I, I thought, this is a regional system, and we're not the region, we're a little piece in the region. And to me, the county should have been the ones that owned it. But, you know, they wouldn't make that, they wouldn't decide to do that. And we were just in compliance with the laws that the state of Texas put forward to us. And so, you know, the city took it on ourselves to do this, and, you know, I don't, like Eddie said a minute ago, I don't think they have a choice but to tie in eventually. But it's, it's like, I'll just say, feet are always dragged, seems like. But I, Chris, I appreciate you bringing this to us, and, and Mr. Kaufman, I think, you know, I'm glad we're doing, well, I mean, we're talking about the tax rate, we're not even talking about the radio system.
We're getting off topic.
Yeah, we're way off topic here. But, but the whole purpose for, for this forty-two cents is because we need to cover our bases to cover this radio system that I think was a fantastic program, the way you guys put it together.
Just information, because it was brought up about our fund balance. But since twenty-twenty, we have spent, let's see, excess of revenues under expenditures. So we've had, under expenditures, we haven't had enough revenues for the expenditures. Minus a million, minus three-point-eight, minus six-point-eight, minus two-point-eight, and minus seven-point-oh. So you wonder how we're still in business. Well, we have, you know, the forty-one million dollar loan, uh, loan that came through. We borrowed the business, we borrowed forty-one million dollars in twenty-twenty-two, and now we're paying that off. But the net of that is, our fund balance was minus two million in twenty-one, plus forty million in twenty-two, so our dollars that came in, minus one-point-seven in twenty-three, and minus twenty in twenty-four, because we did a tremendous amount of work out here on the warehouse. So, you know, I, I just don't want to leave the impression that we are awashing money, and we have money left over at the end of each year. It's, we are, we're running very close at the end of each year. And the twenty, twenty million dollars, you know, I don't know what twenty-five will be, we can cover it. But we'll have to be borrowing some more, more money as we go down, down the road. You know, I read about excellent cities, they have four things: safety, great infrastructure, financial compliance and financial, they're financially conservative, and great staff, continuing staff. In other words, they maintain, they retain the staff, because that's what makes things happen. So, you're right. Today, we're talking about forty-two cents if we have this expenditure come our way that we didn't have when we were talking back in July, or June, late, late June. If it's not, if it, you know, if it gets resolved, if it gets resolved well, then we set the budget at the appropriate, the appropriate number on August twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, right? What was the date?
Twenty-sixth, August.
Twenty-sixth.
Also, I just want to know, y'all know that there's a need to make sure that this, as we move forward, I don't want to be questioning, okay, if we don't get this with the county resolved, we still need to pay these bills, and that's why I put it in here. Simple as that. in here. Simple as that. Whether the county plays ball or not, we're going to have to pay this bill. And if we have to pay it, we, we should know by then. That's my hope, is by September second, we know exactly what the county's wanting to do. But you know what? We sat around and went to a meeting, and they pulled it after two and a half hours of five of my staff people sitting in that meeting to talk about this project and other projects, and without an explanation. So it's up to them to, to figure out what they want to do, and then let us know. And we're going to be happy to meet with them once they review what we've sent them. So hopefully, we'll get it resolved. But I can't make someone else do what we need to have done. This is the only recourse we have.
They agreed to it three years ago.
Yeah.
So, Mayor, just one question.
Mr. Ruiz.
Chris, how did they come, how did you, or how did the staff come up with forty-two cents?
Oh, Ava and I talked about it.
Okay.
She said, this is how much money we need. And I said, well, what would that make the tax rate? And she said forty-two cents.
So, when, so y'all needed four hundred thousand dollars?
It was right at that. I can't remember. Do you know the number the county needs to pay every year? It's on that spreadsheet.
There's, there's two pieces to the equation. There's the piece that the county would be paying us, which was under three hundred thousand. But in order for us to continue servicing our current customers in Charlton, Stevenville, and Erath County, they are jumping off of the tower that the county owns. And so, we would have to run a fiber connection, which I spoke with Spectrum United Co-op. I got an actual quote from, which was how this computation was done with Spectrum. And that's to have a fiber directly from Stevenville PD going to our east tower, to allow them to have the network connectivity for their towers.
That's if the county steps aside. That's what we would have to do.
Okay. To maintain connectivity with our current customers.
Gotcha. And we don't know the cost on that?
No, that, that cost was provided.
That was within the four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, that's.
Yes, sir. That was, what I asked Ava to, and Chris to come up with is, how much does it cost if the county says Kings X were out? And, and we needed to get fiber pricing, he got that. And then the delta of what they wouldn't be paying.
So, two cents would give you five hundred thousand dollars in this budget. Am I correct?
Two cents would give us about four hundred and fifty thousand.
Four hundred and fifty thousand. So
Yeah.
If we go from the no new revenue tax rate that is proposed by the appraisal district, that would bring it up forty-one, point forty-one, four, which, which is right there by forty-two.
Yeah. So you're close. You really don't have to make the decision tonight, so.
I'm just going to not to exceed.
Yeah. We're just trying to put an ad in the newspaper to warn people, notify people, shout out to people, whatever term you want to use.
Yes.
That, hey, we may have to adopt a tax rate at forty-two cents.
You know, the only concern I got is
You'll get calls.
Is, is the, is, is the perception that we're going to increase the tax rate, even though it says not to exceed the forty-two cents. It's the perception out in the, in, in the city that people are going to automatically assume that we're going to raise it to forty-two cents, which we want to be clear, it's a, it's not to exceed forty-two cents. And we still haven't decided, as a city, what that tax rate will be until September second.
And the notice is going to be very clear and transparent that you could be charged in forty-two cents. They're going to make sure of that. So that's, that's the law. It's prescribed, very carefully worded by the legislature, how you've got to post this.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
We'd be making the same decision June twenty-third, if we had the information.
Right. If we'd have known the county was going to drag their heels, so. I hope that's the right term, because when you drag your heels, that means you'll ultimately get there.
Any other conversation?
Conversation?
Comments?
Okay. So, I hear a motion to set the 2025 property ad valorem tax rate for the city of Granbury at a tax rate not to exceed forty-two cents per hundred valuation.
So moved.
Mr. Corgan makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Alom, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass six and oh.
Thank you, Chris.
Good discussion. Thank you, Chris. Yeah. Seven point eight. Discuss and consider steps forward to develop a parking garage on the parking lot located at Crockett and Rucker Streets. Do you want to do this?
Mayor, I will turn this over to Councilmember Alom. This is an agenda item that he was interested in, so I put it together. Road map, possibly, if this is a step y'all want to take to move forward. So, I want y'all to discuss it in direct as you see fit.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Alom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ever since I've moved to the downtown area, I've noticed that parking is one of those things that has been an increasing problem. I've been a resident of Granbury for several years, but until I moved to Pearl Street, I didn't realize how bad it really was. Just as an example, July fourth, which of course is a holiday weekend, I saw people walking all the way from the Mesquite Pit to the square in order to be involved in some of the festivities that were going on. On a more daily basis, I see what they commonly call the million-dollar parking lot is full nearly one hundred percent of the time, especially during the daytime hours. And I also observe a lot of illegal parking, because there's just not many options out there. Now, one of the things that we did earlier tonight was, we voted through the comprehensive plan. And that's looking forward to things we want to, it wants to keep historic, it wants to promote downtown, it wants to promote public safety. And really, it's the public safety that really concerns me the most, because I see how jam-packed the streets are with cars, with pedestrians, with strollers rolling back and forth. And there's just, there are too many times that I tend to cringe when I think that there might be an accident. The idea of the parking garage is nothing new, but it is also nothing sexy, you know? The, the million-dollar parking lot that was built came with a lot of opposition. But I do believe that it is in the best interest of the public safety that we start to consider looking at a parking garage structure, something that looks historic. I, I agree with, with Mr. Haith that, you know, we can't, we can't put something in place that looks like it belongs in downtown Dallas. But we do have some examples of historic, of parking lots that are being built in historic districts that match the current architecture that exists down there. And of course, our architecture goes back a hundred years. So, one of the things that I wanted, that I think we ought to consider, and at least get an architect to take a look at, is keeping a parking garage that looks historic, that promotes downtown, because that's another thing. Imagine the increased foot traffic in downtown, and the increased foot traffic that are going into the vendors, and the increased revenue that's going to exist because of this. But also, of course, public safety, that being my biggest concern. So, those were my ideas, and I had shared with Chris earlier tonight. And I think that it just warrants a good conversation, probably warrants an architect to get in there and take a look at it, just to at least let us know what the costs are and what some of the other considerations are.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, thank you. Zeb, I, I think this has been, you know, brought up several times about a, a parking garage. I think the one thing I have, the one, only thing that I would say is the location of where you're presenting. You know, I, I think it would benefit the city and the citizens if, if it was located somewhere by Hewlett Park. And the reason I say Hewlett Park is because it would benefit not only the citizens coming into downtown, it would get most of that traffic and funnel it as, before it gets to the square. But not only that, but it also benefits those things that we have at our conference center. So we have large gatherings at the conference center. It could house all that parking for that conference center. And then we can probably have that, that bridge where you can have a, you can go underneath the bridge to go to the conference center instead of going over the road to go to the conference center, alleviating some of the safety concerns that you have. But also, it'd be a dual benefit right there. And we could have the trolley go down there and still bring those people from the, from the parking garage up to the, to the, the square. Or there, it's just the same amount of walking distance that it would be if it was located at that other park, at the other location where you're talking about in Crockett and Rucker. I, I'm not opposed to, 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 to a two- or three-story parking lot, because we've seen redensions of how they look with the, the same similar stones and everything that is located on the square. But I think it would benefit the city and its, its capability and events if it was located at the Hewlett Park area.
I appreciate those comments. Those are very viable alternative.
Um, you know, we, we have talked to parking, and I don't think you're going to find anyone that disagrees with you, that the need is here. But I would want that we spend the time on the comprehensive plan. Page three forty-six, three forty-seven, eight, and nine are about the considerations for a downtown parking policy. What do we do on-street parking, alternative modes of transportation? Mr. Rodriguez, we were talking about this eight months, ten months, a year ago. And he, it was, it struck me, because he saw, he defined the problem. The problem is parking. And it doesn't mean that it gets solved with a, you know, we, we keep trying to solve the problem with a multi-dack. Well, maybe it's not multi-dack. Maybe it is somewhere, it is a, a flat surface. And I think that the, the public parking lots that have been identified here are all flat surfaces. Is that the right solution? I, I don't know. I think there is a need for parking. I think there's a need that, that could be set that would, that would also enhance some of the activities that are going on downtown. It'd enhance our, some of our business incomes that, that the merchants were in. Don't disagree with that. But I think it's one of those things where we, we have to be very thoughtful about how to, where is it, what's it look like? How do we communicate to people coming in that here it is, and how they're going to use it? Whether or not it is a paid parking versus a, a non, a non-paid parking. And whether or not we even want to get into the parking business if there was a merchant that, or a landowner in the area that had the ability to put that in as a private enterprise. Agree with you, just don't think that tonight's the night, or not just tonight, but that we can resolve it tonight. But I do encourage us to put, put it in the, you know, maybe it's a motion to delay to a time cert, give us three, four months, go through the comprehensive plan, have some more conversations. It's certainly not something that is not going to be considered. It's certainly not something that is going to be needed. And if intuition and information and rumor is correct, we're going to need, needed, you know, we're, we're going to need it soon and sooner. So I appreciate you bringing it up. I don't know what motion would be made, other than to continue the conversation, or do you have one, or?
Just a discussion.
Just to discuss, to discuss? You know, I have to make you happy with that. Do you want more discussion? No, seriously.
I'm, I'm very happy with it. I love the ideas that Councilman Rodriguez has shared, and your thoughts as well.
Well, there's lots of good ideas up here, and there'll be better ideas out here, so. Good. Okay. Are we complete with that? Need any further action, or need any action? So no actions required on this? Thank you. Let's go to seven point nine. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute the assignment for vendor-direct pay on Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool, claim number TX two-three-five-one-nine-nine. And this assignment will allow for TML IRP to pay vendors directly for invoices related to the property losses covered by TML IRP and caused by the hailstorm on March eighth, 2025. Mr. Kaufman, I know you have a
Pretty, pretty easy agenda item. We're asking to authorize me to sign the assignment for vendor-direct pay. And I'll let Michael fill you in on the details. But the bottom line is, that's what we're after tonight, if you want to move forward to procure these roof replacements that way. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chris, City Council. As was said, we, March eighth, Saturday, we, the town was hit by a pretty severe hailstorm. We've had around thirty roofs damaged as part of that hailstorm. Total loss amount, including what would be included in, what I'll go into, is three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. The good news is, the city is responsible for a one thousand dollar deductible in total for the, for all of those buildings. But that amount, one of the things that the IRP, TML IRP offers, you'll see an attachment in here, it's called their best program. They actually have an expert, a consultant in the roofing industry, that will go out for the bid, go out for proposals or bids, whichever we choose, with the budget we have. Their fee is also paid by TML IRP. And they go, they upgrade to all type four shingles, hail-resistant shingles on all the buildings. That's also paid for by the IRP. So those are a lot of good news. But the main thing tonight is authorizing us to just let TML IRP pay this vendor directly. Turnkey project. We never have to receive the money, go out for bids, and do all the things that we would have to do tip, on a typical project as a city. So it's really advantageous to the city in all ways, is the way we see it. Chris, being on the board, has another perspective of it in a positive way as well, that he's shared. But tonight, we're, we're asking, authorizing the city manager to execute the assignment for the vendor-direct pay on TML IRP, TX two-three-five-one-nine-nine, which will allow the IRP to pay the vendor directly for the invoices related to the property losses from the hailstorm on March eighth. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Ross? No? Do I hear a motion to approve seven point nine, authorize the city manager to execute the assignment for vendor-direct pay?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Alom makes a motion. Mr. Overdare, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass six and oh. Consider adopting resolution number twenty-five dash eleven of the City Council of the city of Granbury, Texas, adopting the eighty-ninth special legislative session, city of Granbury City Council legislative priorities. Mr. Kaufman, put this together for us, if you can elaborate on this?
Sure. I'll put it together at the request of the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a special session going on in Austin. And anytime the legislature's in session, city government's at risk of losing some more control or ability to manage our city locally. So I put together the resolution similar to our previous resolution that we adopted in 2023. And I think the heart of the matter is on the bill that, I mean, there's some generic wording in your, in the priorities, uh, attachment to this resolution. But I think the potential for the biggest amount of destruction is the potential impacts of proposed city and county expenditure caps. You can imagine expenditure caps in your own household. You can't spend more than you bring in. So what do you do? You get a second job, and you start bringing in more money, so you can send the kids to college, or to buy groceries, or to whatever you need to be doing, pay the elevated utilities bills. What this bill has presented, there's two bills, House Bill sixty-three and House Bill eighty-nine. What they would do is actually put a cap on every local government's budget that they couldn't spend more next year than they spent this year. And in our situation, I've put some exact examples in this draft of, of this attachment for you. But I'll just say to the public that our wholesale electricity price that we have to buy in order to provide electric service to our customers is going to double, more than double, in cost. And so, we're going to have to add that cost to our price tag when we sell utilities. And, and if we don't put it in there, we would lose that much money, because the cost of goods sold has to be recovered from the purchaser of the cost of goods. Now, I will say that the bill added Now, I will say that the bill added the CPI and some kind of a growth rate developed by the state of Texas as a multiplier. But still, our CPI is about 2% this year. And with our wholesale cost of utility power doubling, more than doubling, there's no way we would surface on that issue starting in January 2026. So we have, as other electric providers, have incrementally increased our price to offset the upcoming rate that's coming so it won't be a huge increase when it actually hits us in January. Now then, under this bill, we would not be able to collect that additional revenue because it's capped. You're not going to be able to bring in more revenue than you did last year. So without... Let me back up. You can have a voter-approved increase. So we would have to take it to the voters in a November election to be able to adopt a budget that has to go into effect in October. So it's really a backwards process that's going on in Austin related to local government. I'm sure there are some good intentions of what they're trying to do to affect a particular situation. But in our situation and many other small cities, it would be unintended consequence of disaster because just like our wholesale water cost goes up 3% every year by the BRA. So we lease 10,800 acre feet of water from the BRA every year. And when I started 10 years ago, we were paying about $761,000 a year in lease payment. And the payment for this upcoming cycle is a little over 1.1 million. So that has to be passed on to our citizens as well. And we've done that through the years. So if they're not going to allow us to cover our cost of goods sold, I don't know how any government can function. Everyone says you need to run a government like you do a business. There's not a business alive that would sell their goods and services at a negative rate. They would always make a profit. We don't try to make a profit. We try to break even. That's what we try to do. And we try to break even by bringing in enough revenue to replace or to service the debt on infrastructure cost and capital improvements. So there's not some kind of a shareholder equity-sharing mechanism in local government like there would be in a business. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I will tell you that there's another bill that Vettan Court has put together that's for cities over 30,000, or I think that's what it is.
It's over 30.
That would reduce the property tax from... Increase from 3.5% to 2.5%. And so they've decided to tier that to larger cities instead of the smaller cities. So right now, the smaller cities like us have what they call a de minimis rate that you can go up. And that's capped at a half a million dollars is the de minimis you can capture. And there's a sheet in the Truth in Taxation that explains all this to you in the previous agenda item. But so we can go up $500,000 in revenue without taking it to the voters. And so that's a little bit of a window for small cities. But they call it the fire truck bill, part of the bill where, you know, a small city can't even buy a fire truck. Back when they passed the bill, you could actually buy a fire truck for about a half a million dollars. Now they're over a million to show you how much things have gone up.
They're considering getting rid of that.
Yeah, and they're considering getting rid of the de minimis, so. Anyway, we would encourage you to get involved with your senator. I say "we," the mayor and I have talked about this. I'm speaking for him. Get involved with our state rep and our legislature, and let them know how you feel. And of course, if you adopt this resolution, we will provide the resolution. And it won't be a draft anymore. It'll actually be a resolution with an attachment that we could send to those folks to tell them what our concerns are related to what they're doing in Austin during this special session. That is, if they can ever meet again because the Democrats have left the state.
Thank you. I bet you said that last... This is important to me for a number of reasons. One is simply the City of Granbury needs to speak as the City of Granbury. And that's what the city council does. So this brings that common ground, if you will. It makes the voice bigger when any of us are out there speaking on these different resolutions that are being proposed or passed by the state legislature. Give you an example. Tomorrow, I've been asked to speak to the 2025 Infrastructure Summit. It's the Texas Infrastructure Summit. They have conversations, panels on how to balance reasonable development, appropriate regulations. They've got them on aerospace, the airports, water, the land development. But the one that they've asked me to speak on, which I'm sure is a direct result of our being in Austin this past year and being heard, and actually, thanks to Mr. Oberdare and Mr. Wadley, one of the bills got changed significantly because of the conversations that they held. It's... The City of Granbury is looked at, I do believe, as not only the most historic city in the USA, but certainly one of the more progressive cities in the state of Texas as it relates to our finances, our police, our infrastructure. The things that happen in this community and with our city staff are way, way ahead of what you hear from what's going on in other counties or other communities. So they want to know. But I want to be real clear when I'm out there that this is the City of Granbury talking. It's not just Jim Jarrett. This is the City of Granbury. This is how things are happening in our city. And this helps right here. But the... When I got the cheat sheet, if you will, be prepared to talk on these things. And I just pulled up and said, "Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I believe you've taken care of that for me today." Certainly don't want to, you know, be saying anything that's not true and certainly don't want to be letting anything out that I shouldn't let out. But do want the people to understand that the City of Granbury is... They are involved, engaged, and they're engaged with our state representatives as it relates to all of these legislation that comes out that is not... It is not good for the city. There's no way you can look at it and say this is good for the City of Granbury. Just a couple of the bills that Chris mentioned, and if you read the minutes that we have there, all five of them would have a detrimental effect on our finances, our personnel. I mean, you know, they limit the amount of raises. It's like... It's like, wait a minute. If you want to run the city, go run for mayor. But right now, we have... We need these regulations to get out of the way as we run the city. With what, 4.5% growth? And the state would say, "Oh, yeah, we're at 2%, so we'll let you grow by 2%." You know? It's time to adopt this. So I'll quit talking on that. Anybody else? Okay. So adopt Resolution Number 25-11 of the City Council of the City of Granbury, Texas, adopting the 89th Special Legislative Session, City of Granbury Council Legislative Priorities. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley, motion. Mr. Oberdare, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It passes six and oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 711, discuss and consider renewing the emergency declaration for the Broken Water Main Line located at US Highway 377 Business and Crawford Court. Mr. Kaufman?
Well, I would like to proudly say that there is no action required on this agenda item, and the disaster declaration will end at 12:00 PM or 12:00 AM today.
So no action is required?
No action is required.
Because there's been tremendous action over the last six days. Thank you. This is... This is how it happens when you have the kind of staff that we have in the City of Granbury. You know, who else? Who else reaches out three states, three statewide, winds up having a mayor, bless their heart, allow the people that are doing their work for them to come over and help Granbury? We're finding parts that are 45 years old that are no longer the standards. And that's why, you know, we had to reach such a distance. But we... These guys found somebody, touched base with them. And not only did they have one set coming in that was new, a newfound part, but they had the second set coming in that a construction company said, "We are not going to need these for a couple of weeks. Yours will be there." That kind of trust. "We'll send you these. You send us the others over here." So I think we've got them both now, and we're not going to let either one go. Yeah, I'm very appreciative of us.
You know, there's one thing I would like to mention is... And I failed to mention this early on, but the owner of the property adjacent to our water leak gave us a verbal permission to use his property as long as we fix it back. Most people would want some kind of a temporary easement document that we'd need to have drawn up and drafted and notarized, and might even want some money. And J.C. Stone is the owner of that property, and he graciously gave us permission to tromp all over it and dig on it however we needed to, trusting us to restore it back to the original condition. So hats off to J.C. Stone. He's a great community partner with us. He used to own the plantation in. And he has since moved his business to full-time over in Glen Rose, but he still resides in Granbury. So we want to appreciate him. If y'all see him, thank him for that. That's a very generous thing he did.
Very active.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no action required on 7.11. So we're going to move forward. Ms. Walker, do we have anyone who's signed up for citizen comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and pass through that. We do have some things to do in the executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened an open session. That all members are present. City Council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. 551071, consultation with attorney pending a contemplated litigation. Section 551072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So I now declare that we are in executive session. Thank you. Thank you. I now declare the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Is there any other business? There being no other business, I announce the meeting adjourned.